Good evening and welcome to the September 26, 2017, meeting of the Millbrae City Council. Could we have a roll call, please?
All members of the council are present.
Thank you. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Or kneel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have a few presentations at the beginning of the meeting. The first is from Dana Sahai on MCTV, and congratulations Dana.
I'm going to make this quick. I just wanted to start off, good evening. I'm Dana Sahai, Executive Director of Millbrae Community Television. I'm here tonight to provide an annual update to you and the public on MCTV's work in the community. I thought now would be a good time to do it because next month is Community Media Awareness Month, and I think it's important for the community to be aware that Millbrae has its own public access television station. MCTV is a 21-year-old nonprofit that provides free, local, and open access media to the residents of Millbrae. We contract with the city to air all its city council meetings live, on TV, and online. Residents can tune into Comcast Channel 27, AT&amp;T Channel 99, and online at MCTV.tv. MCTV was established with a mission to cultivate a greater sense of community across diverse cultures and generations in Millbrae. To maintain that mission, MCTV regularly covers city events such as the Millbrae Fun Run, the Art &amp; Wine Festival, Japanese Culture Festival, graduations, homecoming football, community center updates, and that's just to name a few. This past fiscal year, we conducted a public outreach campaign that resulted in more than 115 individual and business donors. With their financial support, we were able to purchase two new digital 4K camcorders and a flypack, which allows us to more efficiently move around town and go to all the events that Millbrae has. I should also add that one of the cameras was donated entirely by the Millbrae Lions Club. We really appreciate that. The new equipment allows us to produce higher-quality productions in less time. If you can imagine, we were going to cassette tape on our previous camcorders, so now we're actually digital, and it's nice. The equipment was recently used to complete a sewer modernization video for the city, and we're looking forward to using it on October 20th at the Man and Woman of the Year event. We're also proud of the crew at MCTV. We have a dedicated group of media professionals ranging from recent college grads to experienced veterans. The mix makes for a great learning environment. Three of our part-time crew members have recently gotten jobs at SAP Center. They work all the Sharks games and concerts, and they got their start at MCTV, so I think that's something to really be proud of. We have a growing list of people interested in volunteering as well, since we now have the studio that we opened a couple years ago, where it's getting around and people want to volunteer. This year, we plan to introduce classes for volunteer training and formalize an intern program. With these in place, we'll be able to focus on the goals of producing more local and informative programming like a regular Millbrae Public Affairs show. We're also looking to stay one step ahead, doing our best to use the newest technology and communication techniques. That means you can expect to hear about MCTV being available in more places this year. I'd also like to add that there are some issues we're working out with AT&amp;T. I know the councils talked to me about it. There are some residents who seem to get audio on AT&amp;T and some that don't, and we can't figure out the problem with AT&amp;T, but we're working on it, and people at home should know that. Hopefully, they can hear that. We appreciate the support of the city council, the Millbrae residents, businesses, and service organizations. This is truly a community asset, and it's only made better by your participation. We welcome anyone to stop by our office anytime we're located right next to the 2QD room. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you Dana, and we do all acknowledge MCTV is a valuable community asset and community resource here in Millbrae, so thank you very much for the hard work that you do and all the different events that you cover and helping to get a lot of our words out. So Vice Mayor Pappin, you had a question, comment?
Can you tell us briefly, I believe you did something recently about one of our Public Works projects and information?
Yeah, we produced a video about some sewer modernization, and we actually went out and talked to staff onsite, showed the work that was being done, talked to them why it was being done, why it's needed. We also talked to the mayor. I believe this was all done while I was gone, and I looked at it, it looked great, and hopefully residents get to see it soon.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Aliva? No, Councilwoman Schneider?
We have AT&amp;T U-verse, and we're one of the customers with sound, but I've upgraded a lot of the U-verse equipment over the years. Have you checked the age of the equipment? Some of it could still be 10 years old.
Yeah, that's a concern, that maybe it's different equipment, different, yeah. So we're looking into that with AT&amp;T.
Okay.
They insist everything's fine.
And Dana didn't mention it, but MCTV was out filming on the Art &amp; Wine Festival on that dreadfully hot, hot day, and I was with the film crew, including a 7th grader from Taylor who actually went on to become talent. She interviewed some of the vendors, and then she edited the pieces too. So our volunteers are starting right from Taylor Middle School, and it was just great to see the number of young people working on that day, on that brutal day. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great.
Yeah, I wanted to add that the video that was just brought up about the sewer modernization is on the city website. Residents can go over there.
Very good. And yeah, and I encourage, you know, I see our Public Works Director, Kealan, is here in the room. I encourage to continue communication and collaboration when we have big projects coming up, to send a film crew out there and show people the work that's being done and where your tax dollars are going.
Absolutely.
So thanks very much Dana for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a presentation from SMC Alert, from Bill Riley of the Sheriff's Department District Coordinator, and actually have a proclamation I'd like to give, and then you can give the report. Whereas, San Mateo County, SMC Alert will encourage Millbrae businesses, residents, and visitors to register for emergency communications to be sent to cellular telephones, electronic mail, and text messages in order to inform the community of the events that impact them. And whereas, SMC Alert is the primary means for public safety to contact people during a critical incident and ensure timely, accurate information is provided. That allows people to be informed and prepared. And whereas, SMC Alert will be the primary means of communication by San Mateo County Office of Emergency Services to alert people to safe evacuation routes and centers, community points of distribution, major traffic events, and any life-threatening circumstance. Now therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim September 26, 2017, as SMC Alert Day. Encourage everyone to sign up and receive SMC Alert messages. So thank you very much for helping to coordinate and get the word out here in Millbrae and make sure that we are prepared.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Look forward to the report. Do a quick photo proclamation.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We do appreciate that quite a bit. The Office of Emergency Services, San Mateo County, is very adamant in spreading the word through SMC Alert. It is one of the best tools we have as far as alerting our citizens, as mentioned in the proclamation. I was talking a little earlier to Councilwoman Pappin about the widespread use of it throughout the country, and it was interesting, we discussed this morning that it's due for an update, but because of what's happening in Texas and in Florida, they're holding back on it for a few weeks until things settle down because they don't want to take it offline for any time at all, and they're only looking at 15 to 20 minutes. But that's how critical it can be, certainly in a disaster. So you can find, certainly reinforce what a great tool it is. I have a few facts and figures to show you what's used in San Mateo County. The system right now has 60,000, over 60,000 public subscribers and 10,000 anonymous Quick Code subscribers. Those Quick Code subscribers are ones that just put in their zip code and they get responses, and we really don't get a lot of interaction with them. But full subscribers, we go in, they get information from them, we can tell them where they're from and so on, as well as how we can alert them for what is going on. In SMC Alert, you can sign up for your jurisdiction, your city of Millbrae. You can sign up for two or three cities, the entire county, and you can kind of pick and choose as you want. You can actually sign up for someplace back east if you have relatives in another city, which is interesting, although you want to be careful if it's a large city, it may be going off quite a bit. Anyway, with that, there's 517 public notifications in the last 12 months. That's good, but you know, it's one of those things, we temper those notifications. Too much is not good either, because then we inundate with things that aren't important. So we try to keep them to a point where they're very useful information. I'll give you some examples of that, but we want to don't overuse it because then it turns people off and they'll unsubscribe to it. Statistics in Millbrae, your population is 22,000, I'm sure you're aware of that, but there's only 1,463 subscribers as of last month. That's 6.5% of the residents. From other cities that are interested in Millbrae, there's over 5,000. Many of those are people that signed up for countywide, or like I do, I sign up, I have the countywide, but then I did earmarked Millbrae, San Bruno, Burlingame, and the surrounding communities because it impacts us, and those are things you really might want to know about, especially in traffic things because it impacts you so quickly. Total number of contacts reached from Millbrae is 7,240, which is a sizable amount, but again, it's not where we want to be. 12% of all subscribers. Alerts based on emergencies, and this is interesting, if you look over a period of the year, how they were spread out and why. Two certain times, we have more alerts than others, and we look in this, we see a couple of indications. One is in October of last year, and then again in January and February this year, we have quite a few alerts. And those were due to, in October one, it was an RV caught fire and it closed down 101. That's three hours during the traffic, the peak traffic time. So that was really impacted a lot, and I'm sure we all felt that. When you're in traffic and you don't know what's happening and it's not moving, it is extremely frustrating, but when you know, it's kind of like, oh, at least I know why we're here. And then you start to think about other things you might want to do, but certainly it's very helpful. The other, in January and February, we all experienced oil storms, and had quite a few in flooding, diverting cars around certain areas, and power outages and so on. It became very useful. Future of SMC Alert, well, the alert days as we're doing now, we've been doing it throughout the county. When we first set this up, it was just daily city in Menlo Park, I'd already proclaimed, but since then, I think there's three or four other ones. I'm sorry. And I might introduce our supervising Emergency Services Coordinator from County OES, Stephanie Murty, who's back in the office there. Yeah. But we have, again, there's been a number of other proclamations have been made throughout the county, and this is a countywide effort, and I really do appreciate Millbrae stepping forward as well. Our goal again is for 100,000 subscribers or more, and we'd like to get that as many as we can, because then we'll really be an informed public during an emergency or disaster. Community outreach, we go through residents and business, social media, and so on, public television. I'm going to be talking to Dana. As she was talking there, I was ready to jump up and I didn't want to interrupt her, but we will certainly have something come through that, and she's wonderful to work with, so I think that'll work out very well. Okay. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and again, thank you very much for the proclamation. We do really appreciate it.
All right, thank you Chief. Any questions? Vice Mayor Pappin?
Ken, for those viewers right now, can you tell them how to sign up and?
Oh, I do apologize. And I brought it with me too.
There you go.
This is a brochure for SMC Alert, but if you go online, smcelert.info, it walks you right through the signup process. And we go through this, you'll find it is quite easy to do, and you give as much information as you want, but the important thing is if there's the three mediums we use, and that's through cellphone, text messages, and emails. So if we have all three of those, you know, we can reach you in many ways. And what we do many times, especially with the text messages, is we'll alert you that there's information that will be followed up on your email, where you get a lot more information on it if you wish. So it's a pretty well-integrated system that provides quite a bit of information.
And it's free.
Pardon?
Free of charge.
Free of charge. Well, the only thing is if you get charged for your texts, we don't have any control over that, you know, so it'd be incremental, but not too many to charge that anymore, so I think we're in pretty good shape.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Do you, thank you. As the city rep to Emergency Services Council, we talk about this every meeting, which is once a quarter, and it is a goal to try to get these beefed up. And I got to tell you, one of our fellow cities with our fire department, they're at 20% and greater. Hillsborough's already got 20% or more, and it was because their city council and their CERT, I think, did a lot of really proactive work. So at the committee level, we're trying to come up with ways to make this more of a little bit of a competition, try to get more people signed up, sign your parents up, or sign up for your parents if that's the case. But this truly is a great, great tool to keep people informed, and I don't know, and I should know, if it's accessible on our website, the city's website.
It is.
It is. Okay, so maybe, and then with MCTV, we can roll it and get it on there, so thank you.
Yeah, and one thing you mentioned CERT, I would challenge you to, all right, all CERT members, go to your neighborhood. I'll get more brochures if I can and work your neighborhood for us, that would be great.
Cool.
Okay.
Yeah, we're in the lower percentiles of people signed up on MCT Alert, so we really have a lot of work to do.
Yeah, well, thank you Chief Riley on that presentation, and yeah, good work.
Okay, so maybe, and then with MCTV, we can roll it and get it on there. So, thank you.
Yeah. And one thing, you mentioned CERT, I would challenge you to, all right, all CERT members, go to your neighborhood. I'll get more brochures if I can and work your neighborhood for us, that would be great.
Cool.
Okay.
Yeah. We're in the lower percentiles of people signed up on MCT Alert, so we really have a lot of work to do.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Chief Riley, on that presentation. And yeah, good work. Okay. Next, we have a proclamation on Fire Prevention Month. Is Chief Kamier here?
Chief is not, so I'm going to suggest that Chief Copeland and I stand in and get it to him in the morning unless there's a preference on the council.
Any preference?
I apologize, chief must have been called away.
Okay.
We talked about it yesterday, so Fire Prevention Month. So, it's all right, we've taken him off program here a little bit.
Whereas, the city of Millbrae is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Millbrae. Whereas, the U.S. fire departments responded to 365,500 home fires in 2015, according to the National Fire Prevention Association. Whereas, U.S. home fires resulted in 2,560 civilian deaths in 2015, representing 78 percent of all U.S. fire deaths. And whereas, many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic acids and smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments. And whereas, these conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape a home fire safely, with people having as little as one to two minutes to escape from the time the smoke alarm sounds. And whereas, a home fire escape plan provides the skillset and know-how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation. And whereas, a home fire escape plan includes two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting. And whereas, home fire escape plans should be developed by all members of the household and practiced twice a year. And whereas, first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, the 2017 Fire Prevention Month theme, "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out," effectively serves to educate the public about the importance of developing a fire escape plan and practicing it twice a year. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2017 as Fire Prevention Month.
So, thank you, our stand-in chief. Thank you for work on fires and city manager as well.
We just want to make sure that our fire colleagues are well represented. They do a lot of good work for us in terms of prevention and...
Mike.
We want to make sure that our fire colleagues are well represented. We apologize again, they must have been pulled away, but this is very important that this information get out to the public. So, we will make sure we communicate with them first thing in the morning. Thank you for your patience.
Want to do a quick photo?
Oh.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Presentation?
No, you don't have it.
Okay. Okay. Next on the agenda is the Agenda Overview and Staff Briefing, and we have the city manager, Ms. Rins, to give the presentation, the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have six or seven very quick things that I would like to bring to the attention of the council. First, we're very happy in our partnership with the Historic Museum that we completed the new roof on the Historic Museum in the past week to 10 days, received several thank-you acknowledgements of that work. So, we continue to be good partners with the Historic Museum. Most of you are fully aware that they recently completed a second building, which will house one of our antique fire trucks. And so, they're very, they've got a lot of momentum, and we're very pleased with the partnership on our end, and I know they are as well. Next, sewer modernization project. Last week, Public Works conducted two public workshops to help residents understand the upcoming work to modernize our aging city sewer system. We had dozens of people attend the workshops that were held both Wednesday evening and Saturday morning. For those that couldn't make the workshops, what I want to say, that rebroadcasts can be watched on MCTV. We had Dana here earlier, and they've been a very good partner. She mentioned the work that they've done that will be posted on our website. Sanitary sewers, we have started smoke testing to locate areas of unwanted storm water that is entering our city sewer system. The project will actually begin in September this month with an estimated duration of 100 days. It involves putting non-toxic smoke into the sewer system that'll identify damaged areas, improper connections, and deficits where storm water may be infiltrating our system. So, you may see smoke around the community. We are identifying neighborhoods that we are conducting smoke testing in prior to the testing occurring, and Public Works is coordinating with County Fire to ensure that everybody's aware of what you may see as smoke in some areas and can respond accordingly and know the difference. PG&E has announced publicly that they are releasing natural gas today and tomorrow into the atmosphere at three locations. They've given public notification, if you have any questions about what you see, smell, or hear, there is a PG&E number, but we would suggest you call 911 if you have any concerns. Coastal cleanup day, we are very happy to report that we had over 130 volunteers on Saturday, September 16th, and 13 sites around Millbrae. It was very well executed by our Public Works and administration staff, and the public responded very well and helped assist in cleanup of coastal areas and park areas. The Japanese Cultural Group is conducting the 12th Annual Japanese Cultural Festival this Sunday, October 1st, in the parking lot adjacent to the library, and this festivity will begin at 10:30. Please come out and enjoy this wonderful, beautiful festivity that we've all become accustomed to. Finally, the Central County Fire and Millbrae Police Bureau would like to remind drivers to please pull to the right for emergency vehicles that have their siren and red lights flashing. It's a safety issue for you as well as for our employees. And with that, I would like to go on to the agenda. We have a report of bills and claims since your last council meeting, along with council consideration of minutes for both the regular meeting of July 11th as well as the special meeting of July 18th. We have a report from our Planning Commission Chair regarding planning commission activities this evening, followed by public communications and consent calendar items. On the consent calendar, we have two items of business. First, the council considering a resolution that would accept Street and Roads Preservation Project for 2017, and direct the filing of a notice of completion. And second, council considering a resolution that would include Old Bay Shore Highway and the fiscal year 17, 18 street repair project that would be in compliance with SB 1, authorizing appropriation of $650,000 that will be taken from the gas tax dollars in the city's budget and increasing the gas tax capital projects budget for fiscal years 17 and 18 in the amount of $650,000. Following that item, we have no public hearings, no existing business, and no new business. We have council comments this evening, after which we recommend that you adjourn to your next meeting. Do you have any questions of staff?
Questions on the agenda? Is Vice Mayor Pappin?
Yeah, just a little concerned how we skipped over this release of quote-unquote gases. I know you, but what kind of gases are they releasing here?
I'll read you the entire piece of information. On Tuesday, September 26th, and Wednesday, September 27th, PG&E will release natural gas, that's part of your question, into the atmosphere at three locations, local stations of PG&E. They plan to release natural gas between the hours of 2:00 PM and 9:00 PM both days at Larkspur Station, their Larkspur Station, which is west of 280 in Millbrae, Edgewood Station, which is west of 280, and Edgewood Road, and Crystal Springs Regulator Station behind the 1575 Lakeview Drive, actually located in Hillsborough. The pipelines will be cleared of gas utilizing safe line purging techniques. They are taking steps to mitigate noise and odor and have scheduled the work to create the least possible impact. However, it is likely that the work will result in some odor and some noise. Safeties are top priority. They feel that they've indicated this publicly through noticing. We encourage, however, anyone who has questions and concerns about the smell of gas to call PG&E 24 hours a day, and they give their standard number, 1-800-743-5000, or call 911 immediately.
I just, I'm sorry, we're talking about PG&E, so taking what they say with a grain of salt here. I mean, they just say natural gases. What have they, is somebody passing gas here? What kind of gases? There's a lot of natural gases out there. Shouldn't we know what's being released?
Excuse me, we'd be happy to ask them to present...
Please, that would be, I think, important. Thank you.
Councilman Lee?
I was going to say, unfamiliar with this process.
Are you current ahead, please?
But it's not...
You like this.
Yeah, well, I mean, they're just, they have to clear a line before they can work on it, so they're purging out the line, and it flares like a lighter, so, but it does make a lot of noise if you're nearby, so, and you might see smoke, but basically, it's a safety, it's a safe process, they do this, it's a typical thing to do.
Routine.
And in terms of the gas, it's CH4, isn't it? It's methane?
Natural gas.
Well...
Natural gas with mycотin, you know...
It is methane, correct?
It's whatever you burn, it's whatever you burn in your furnace, whatever you burn in your stove, that's what the natural gas we're talking about.
And they said the smell, they put, they add sulfur to the gas so that you can smell it, otherwise, it's an odorless gas. So, if you smell sulfur, it's what you should look out for.
Thank you. All right. So, next on the agenda is the Approval of Minutes, and we have two meetings, July 11th, 2017, and July 18th, 2017. It looks like we have a motion from Councilman Lee and a second from Councilwoman Schneider. Your votes, please.
The minutes for the regular meeting of July 11th and the special meeting of July 18th are unanimously approved.
Okay. Next on the agenda is an update from the Planning Commission, and we have with us our Chair Jean-Joe to give a presentation.
Doesn't look like it went on.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Pappin, and council members. My name is Jean-Joe, and I've been serving as the Chair of the Millbrae Planning Commission. First of all, I'd like to thank you and the residents of Millbrae for allowing me the privilege of serving on the Planning Commission. I've been on the Planning Commission since March of 2013, and it has been a very rewarding and at times quite challenging experience for me. As you all know, Millbrae is in a time of great transition, and it's no small thing to be in this position of helping to shape the development of our city. I take this responsibility and trust very seriously, and I know that my fellow commissioners feel the same. For the format of this presentation, I thought it would be best to review the work planned tasks for the Planning Commission for 2016 to 2017, and briefly discuss what we've worked on in line with these tasks, although admittedly, there's some overlap between them. So, just go to that. So, the 2016 to 2017 work planned tasks, as you see here, the advisory to serve as the advisory body to the city council, the municipal code, Millbrae Station area specific plan, downtown economic development plan, the general plan, and planned development area. The ones with the asterisks are those which coincide with city council priorities as well. Task one, just to kind of delve into it a little bit more, as an ongoing, as you see here, as an ongoing activity, to serve as the recommending and decision-making body for land use planning matters, as defined in the Planning and Zoning Ordinance, to process applicant requests in a manner consistent with city policies, procedures, guidelines, et cetera, I won't read it word for word, and to keep abreast of current and emerging issues in the field. Related to this, one of our main tasks obviously is design review. In the past year, we reviewed 15 residential projects, mainly in the R1 zoning district. Eight of these were for expansions from single-story to two-story homes, and there were two additional two-story projects, one of which was a new construction, and the other a two-story structure behind an existing one in R2, so basically a duplex. Two additional new two-story projects have already come through recently, and then in addition to that, there was one appeal of an approved design review permit. This leads me in a way to the last part, which is talking about the keeping abreast of current and emerging issues in the field, with the onset of many more, more than half of our design review projects have been for the second-story expansions. We're seeing definitely many more issues like views, privacy, sunlight, massing, parking, all of these issues that have come up time and time again, sometimes very difficult to resolve, and we do our best to try to resolve, help resolve that, or to, you know, preserve neighbor relationships as much as we can, but it is quite a challenge, and we're working through that. But that is one thing that continues to arise, and I'm sure will continue to do so in the future. In addition to the items that I mentioned, there's also this tension just between the desire for preserving the charm and character of our community and, at the same time, the need for modernization and progress, and that's been as well another factor that, another issue that we've had to deal with a lot, as well as the big one, which is economic development, balancing that against really making sure to preserve the quality of life for our existing residents. And I'm sure you, I know you experience the same thing, so these are some big challenges that we've been facing. Some of the main issues that have come up on a grand, on a bigger scale, not just design review, is the need for more affordable housing, as we know that this may, this is definitely going to impact us as we deal with the new requirements, with the requirements for new developments, as well as amending the regulations to allow for accessory or secondary dwelling units as required by the state law. The, another issue is the idea of complete streets, really the designing streets that are operated, designed and operated to enable safe access for all users. And then, the big one, which is the challenges of parking and balancing the need for providing sufficient parking versus, on the other hand, encouraging people to change some of their lifestyle habits and reducing dependence on cars. I think this is definitely all the more relevant to us as we have the advantage of being the multimodal transit hub of the peninsula. Many of these items obviously are not easy. We've grappled with them many times on the Planning Commission, and I know you have as well as part of the city council, but I look forward to just continuing to work through those issues and doing what we all can for the best of our community. Moving on to task two, that will be my longest one, so I'll go faster from here. The municipal code, so as an ongoing activity to identify updates to the zoning ordinance, efforts to streamline permit review and reduce ambiguity in the code, and respond to objectives identified in the economic development plan, implement the general plan and housing element, and address any changes in the state law. Some of these items I've already addressed in the previous task, so they do overlap. One specifically I thought would be interesting to bring up is with regard, again, to the second-floor additions. At the beginning of 2015, the Planning Commission recommended an amendment to the zoning ordinance, which was then passed to allow for the streamlining of permit applications by authorizing staff approval, approval at the staff level, for upper-floor expansions of no more than 500 square feet. This is something we are, we may be discussing, we have talked about it a little bit, may be discussing in the future as to reviewing, you know, the format of that and how that's working out for us, and to make sure to clear up any ambiguities or loopholes that we've been kind of facing as a result of trying to streamline and making sure that people at the same time don't try to shortcut the process or go around the process. Task three, the Millbrae Station area specific plan, to address city council priorities, to review the multimodal, multi-agency, comprehensive station access plan, provide recommendations to you as a city council, and review entitlement applications for the Millbrae Station area specific plan. Specific to this, as you know, you probably know, we've had joint sessions, two joint sessions with the Park and Rec Commission, as directed by city council to study and make recommendations regarding the park and recreational impact fees for the Millbrae Station area specific plan. We also had a first study session on the Sarah Station project in May, just this recently, just this past May, and will be considering this further on, in our first meeting in October, on October 2nd. And then also, the... And then also, the TOD, Transit Oriented Development Projects, that are, I believe, scheduled for October 16th as well, to start, start looking at, I'm sorry? The TOD projects, both, so Sarah Station is October 2nd, and then the Republic Urban, that bigger project, is on October 16th. At least, that's what I saw. I believe that's what it is on me. Okay. So, and again, most of these are going to, we're going to be bringing, it's going to, we're going to be seeing a lot of the same issues that I mentioned in my first, in the first task. Task four, the Downtown Economic Development Plan, to address City Council priorities, participate in review of use permits, design review, and other activities which may be within the purview of the Planning Commission. So this, in this, we did review four conditional use permits, one extension and one modification for the commercial projects, two of which were in the downtown improvement area. I didn't bring up anything specifically to that, I can answer your questions on that, but some of those you may have, you may be well familiar with. So, and then finally, task five, the General Plan and Plan Development Area, to address the City Council priorities, serve as the advisory body to the City Council, hold meetings and review and make recommendations to staff and consultants at defined milestones for the General Plan and the Plan Development Area, and then to make recommendations. Last March, we had a special combined meeting with City Council to kick off the two-year project, then, then the two-year project of updating the General Plan. In November, there was the final wrap-up to the community charrette process, and then, this past February, a study session to preview, to review the proposed concepts for the General Plan and the Priority Development Area Specific Plan, based on those. Moving forward, we, again, will, this will be, this task will be definitely one of the major tasks for our Planning Commission. And this is now, moving on to the 2017 and 2018 work planned tasks. I'm not going to read them here, because as you can see, most of them are generally a continuation of last year's work plan. The, one exception is task number five, which is the rebuilding of the community center. And as for this, the Planning Commission recently appointed Commissioner Maureen Davis to serve on the Advisory Committee, which will make the recommendations to consultants and City Council, as well as provide updates to us in the Planning Commission. The coming year promises to be a full one, as we continue to work on the update to the General Plan and the PDA, and personally, I'm hoping that we may be able to see, I'm looking forward to being able to see some significant progress on the projects for the station area. I'm aware, and I'm sure you are as well, that there are many issues that do need to be worked out and resolved. I know staff is working very hard on them, and, but at the same time, I would really, again, look forward to seeing these move forward, some kind of progress coming forward in Millbrae over the coming year, and so that we can really, as a city, continue to grow and shine as the hub of the San Francisco Bay Area. This concludes my presentation for the evening. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve on the Planning Commission, and I look forward to continue to working alongside my fellow commissioners to do our parts in helping shape the future of Millbrae. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Jo. Are there any questions from the council? Yes, Councilwoman Schneider?
Someone, please educate me on this. And you're responsible for municipal codes and codes that need to be changed, so we're going to be getting them, I think, a moratorium on marijuana coming before us. That would probably not be you, but what the consultants came and said, that because we've created smoking centers, that is also a place now where people can smoke marijuana. So would smoking ordinances be something that would go through planning?
I have no idea. Staff would need to answer that.
Well, somehow, to deal, if nothing else, to deal with the marijuana in public.
Conditional use permits or something, I would think.
If it has to do with zoning.
Right, since it has to do with zoning, use permits, possibly.
I don't think that a smoking ordinance would need to go through planning.
Okay. And then, my second question, Jean, you've done a lovely job when I've sat in in the back of meetings, and I appreciate your trying to balance things. What I've seen, I'm usually in trying to hear about a parking issue, but I've seen residents come in with multiple permits that have pushed us over that 500 square foot, and is that something that we need to change in the General Plan or change in the municipal codes? Is that what you were talking about, in terms of cleaning, cleaning out the loopholes?
I'll go ahead and start answering, and then I think staff would probably know more. I was here, I was on the Planning Commission when we did recommend that to the City Council, and we were a little concerned at that time, even, we were concerned at that time that there might be people who might try to work the system. We did say that we were thinking that we would probably come back and review it and see what, you know, what permits have come through, what are the issues involved, and kind of try to clean that up. So I think that's something that we have somewhat talked about, mentioned in some of our meetings, but we have not officially agendized that yet, and maybe staff can speak to that further, but that's as much as I know. So, okay, thank you.
The complaints that I usually get related to permitting from the people in the public is usually, they've been asked by a neighbor, they've been shown a picture, and then what gets permitted is something else entirely. So I look forward to hearing what you guys will come up with that particular loophole, as well as the 500 square, the shading on lamida, that whole thing seemed very difficult. So you do deal with difficult things, you do a lovely job, and I thank you for that, but I'd like to see those fixed. I'm also personally concerned when a new design comes into a neighborhood that doesn't match the existing neighborhood. So you, I like when you spoke about the character of a neighborhood. I know it's a balance between progress, but I've seen some really horrible remodeling jobs around Millbrae, some are probably going back decades, before any of us were born, but they do exist, and it brings the neighborhood down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Pappin?
My compliments. That was a wonderful presentation. Thank you very much for all of your hard work, because it is not easy being on the Planning Commission at all, and you do have a lot of balancing to do. As you so eloquently put it, we do have some very serious challenges ahead of us, and I do like the fact that you are all quite aware of the station plan and what went into that, and hopefully, if things come before you, you take that into consideration. Today's newspaper had a very good article about the difficulty people have in commuting, and how important our station area is with traffic and just getting people to and from public transportation. So I thank you on that front. And I just want to reiterate, too, because I know there's a lot of, we have significant developers out there, and a lot of whom are trying to influence the community, and probably the Planning Commissions, and probably the council here. So I would hope that the commissioners are public in any private meetings they've had with developers, or the purpose time and all of that, as the council is supposed to be as well, because we are approaching big, significant projects, and I'm hoping that no one would be unduly influenced in all of that. But you guys are doing a fabulous job. I thank you. Anything we can do to support you, please let us know, because as you are quite aware, it is very important, the job that you do, and we hope that we can continue working with you all and support you and your efforts. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I would like to say that I do try to, I do agree that it is important to keep that transparency, to make sure there is no undue influence one way or the other. I try to, I have met with some of the developers, just so that I can understand it a little further, because it's such a huge endeavor, but that's pretty much the extent of it. So, and again, it's a balance between trying to get as much information as you can, both on, you know, both from the developer's standpoint, as well as from staff, and asking a lot of questions. You know, all of you know, when we get those big packets, and, you know, it can be quite overwhelming. So I would say that's pretty much the extent to which I have ever met with anyone, and I, I agree that it's important to keep that transparent process going. Thank you.
And I would hope that it's standard policy for people to disclose prior to any decision making.
I would assume so. I, I mean, I do, as a matter of course, and I think everybody has, so.
I would encourage you that, as these things move forward, that that is clearly stated prior to any meetings that are happening.
And that there's a policy for doing that, and a procedure for doing that.
Because, I, it's a requirement.
I'm assuming it's a requirement, but I don't know if we, I don't think we've ever stated it upfront, at the meeting, at the beginning of the meeting, but I.
I don't believe you need to state it at a meeting until the matter comes before the commission, and I don't believe the matter has officially come before you yet, but when it does, we will give you appropriate guidance. Any ex-party meetings with developers should be stated on the record and captured in the minutes.
Thank you. I would encourage you to let the committee members know that now, so that they are keeping track of any meetings that they have, the purpose time that's involved here, because the council is supposed to be doing the same thing. So, thank you very much.
Definitely, that's a good point. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lee, had a comment?
Yeah, again, thank you for the hard work, you and the other commissioners. I do miss being on the commission sometimes. Yeah. And I just want to reiterate, Councilwoman, Vice Mayor Pappin, that the project, I hope that this project that we're considering around the BART station and El Camino, is going to affect one neighborhood in particular more than anybody else, and they've been impacted by the BART station already, and now they're going to be impacted more. So I hope that we can mitigate, you know, the impact to those neighborhoods. And also, recognizing that this project is a very unique project, it's not like any other BART projects where they have a commercial base nearby. There is no commercial, a big commercial base in Millbrae. So that in itself necessitates a different approach. And this is, as you mentioned, this is the largest transportation hub, so thank you for recognizing that, and looking at the uniqueness of this, you know, project, and the fact that we're going to, we're only stop for the high-speed rail, we're only, we're only a hub that's next to an airport. So it's, it has a lot of potential, and we shouldn't be throwing those potentials away on just a run-and-mill project. My other question is, too, is that when I was a commissioner, I went to a lot of training. Is, are you guys receiving enough training? Are you guys going to conferences and that sort of thing?
We haven't really, I mean, the staff has been available to, we've been meeting with staff, if there are big projects that come up, and they've definitely been available to explain things for us. I would love more training, to be honest, because I'm just, I mean, I've learned quite a bit over the past four years, and it's been a great experience, but I, you know, I'm a big proponent of education in any manner, and so the more that we have, I would, I think that would be great to have, but so far, we haven't.
Legal Cities has an annual convention that I found was very, very useful in finding the latest legal trends, the latest designs, latest issues that impacts zoning and planning. So with the, you know, I mean, I would hope that the council would, would support that, that we send our commissioners on these Legal Cities conventions, whatever. Thanks again.
Thank you very much, Chair Jo. Councilwoman Aliva, I apologize.
I'm not one to usually repeat, but I just want to say thank you so much, Jean. You're doing a wonderful job, and I'm really happy to have your head on those shoulders and guiding us through this huge undertaking.
Thank you. I'm trying to get out of it, but, actually, my term as a chair ended at, end of June, I keep saying, but different circumstances have kept me here, so.
You're doing great.
I'll be here, I'll do my best as long as I can, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Jo. Thank you very much. I know this is oftentimes a thankless job, and especially with the General Plan and these developments coming up, there's going to be a lot of detail and a lot of information that we need to make sure we assess properly and accurately, and we really rely on the Planning Commission's judgment and recommendation before our final decision is made. So thank you very much for your service.
Can we?
Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor Pappin?
Can you, because you have an October 2nd meeting and October?
16th.
16th, involving the two big developments within the city, give the public the time and location. They, it is open to the public?
Yes. Yes, it is our regularly scheduled time, so it's October 2nd and 16th, both are Mondays, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers.
And I understand those two meetings are going to be televised, right?
I'm assuming so. That's not my, I.
Yes, those meetings will be televised. Staff is already working with MCTV to make sure that those meetings are televised and broadcast.
Okay. And are we giving any special consideration or information to the residents in that area? Because if we're not, we're going to hear about this later, and I'd prefer that they became quite aware, that some special announcement goes out.
You're referring to the Hemlock, residents on Hemlock?
I.
I'm, that's.
I imagine within 500 feet, they'd get a notice.
The city is doing the proper noticing that we need to do, required for the public hearing, so that has gone out. And it's also in the newspaper as well, as published as required.
Okay. I just think these are so big, that if we can and are able to take additional steps with our social media, the schools, and everybody getting the message out, what is out there? The sooner we do that, the better, and I think the more community input we can get is vital to the process.
All right, well, thank you very much for the presentation, and we look forward to the hard work on these big projects coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Okay. Next on the agenda is public communication. This is the opportunity for any member of the public to speak on an item that is not on this evening's agenda. Speakers have up to three minutes, and when you have 30 seconds left, the yellow light will go on, and when the red light goes on, your time is expired. Our first speaker of the evening is Wyn Gersich.
I'm glad to hear that you're getting your sewer lines replaced. Dr. Wyn Parker, that was what he advocated many years ago, that he wanted the water and sewer lines replaced, and using alternative technology to disinfect the water, especially now that we're going toilet-to-tap in this state. And this, this article was in the paper July 6th, about toilet-to-tap, some says it's time. And it's, this is going to happen, because Barbara Boxer and Feinstein wrote a bill in 2005 to open up 105 recycled toilet water facilities in the state of California. But when you use chloramine, and you mix it with the organic matter and all the other stuff, the medicines and everything else that goes down the toilet, they make disinfectant byproducts, which all cause cancer. And if our bodies like 80% water, and we're drinking this stuff that's all carcinogenic with disinfectant byproducts, we're going to see more and more people getting cancer. And this can be cured, you know? If we, we pay almost, what you pay in this city for water is like liquid gold. I would think you'd want the best, and the best would be using alternative technology, but you can't do that until you fix the water pipes. So that's a good thing. But another thing, too, is that there's a lot of stuff happening with this Senate Bill 649 about the cell phone towers, and there was an article today of which I put how many of the cities are saying to veto this bill, because they're concerned about not getting rent when they put these 5G cell phone towers, that can cause brain tumors, heart arrhythmias, and all kinds of good stuff, and more cancer, right in front of your house, over the sidewalk, and they're putting these things up all over the state of California. But the cities are ticked off, because they're not getting rent from it. And what they've forgotten is the fact that a lot of people have heart pacers, they have cochlear implants in their ears, they have metal in their bodies, like a knee replacement and all kinds of stuff, and when you're shooting down 5Gs of microwaves, and they claim there's no studies done on health effects, but we know 4Gs can cause brain tumors just from your cell phone. So it's kind of funny how 5Gs is really strong, and they know, they know that this is really damaging, it can cause cancer, according to the California Tumor Association. And this thing went through anyway, because our lovely corrupt politicians that like to get lobbied and get money for themselves, don't give a hoot about your health. And how many of you called Jerry, Jerry Hill? I called his office, but I don't see too many people doing this, and, you know, he was all for this, but he's also for fluoride, too, and Jackie Spears did that to the rest of the peninsula, and it increases cancer death rates 40% to fluoridate the communities. And Dr. Donald Dawson, California Tumor Registry, quoted that. And also, too, is that if you look up Dr. Dean Burke, Dean Burke said fluoridation doubles breast cancer death rates, because we know chloramine causes breast cancer, and then you add fluoride to it, you've doubled breast cancer death rates. So we can stop all of this if we stop the chemicals. Thank you.
Next speaker is Marcia Faro-Petiti.
I'm hoping I'm in the right place for my concern.
I'm hoping I'm in the right place for my concern. My concern is the, oh, I'm sorry. The paving repair project that is, I believe, just started. The letter that my husband and I received beginning of September from the, was it the paving, the paving company, gave us the instructions of when they'd be starting and so forth. They showed up yesterday and removed the concrete sidewalk in big chunks. And then this morning, they showed up with their digging equipment and started to dig and remove asphalt and whatnot. However, to our amazement, by the end of the day, we realized that they had cut away about a one-foot wide by about a 30-foot-long stretch of our front yard. And in doing so, we also noticed that they cut our irrigation pipes and rerouted them and damaged them to some great extent. We thought our first phone call should be to the contact on the letter of the paving company, which was a Mike Pariani. He was not particularly helpful. He indicated that the, that the paperwork he had there, or the maps that he had there, he said the city had drawn up the, the property, I don't, it wasn't property line, wasn't the exact term he used, but indicated that, that he dug up to where the city said. And then when I, when I questioned him regarding the damage to the irrigation system, he said, "Well, we might have dug another two or three inches farther than we should have." At this point, my husband and he chatted on the phone for a few minutes. My husband was quite concerned and perturbed. The contact for the company then told him to calm down and hung up on him and wouldn't talk to him anymore. So my concern, I guess, is I've been made aware that perhaps the city has the power to stop, stop work when perhaps a property line is in question, because my husband's owned the house for more than 30 years, and the property line has always been there. So we, he bought the house, assuming that that's where the property line was. So I'm kind of hoping, I don't know, like I said, if this is the right place for me to come for, for guidance. I may be incorrect in understanding that the, the city can, can stop work maybe just until the property line can be determined.
Can I take this one?
Yes.
So this is a good place to start. There are others. We have another item on the agenda that the Public Works Director happens to be in the room to hear. So I think, given the order of the agenda, and I believe you have other guest speakers, public speakers, public communication, I'm going to ask him to step outside with you and get your name and number, and give you a call in the morning, and try and figure out what's really going on here. Because without maps and direct knowledge, he may not be able to help you.
I understand.
But that's fine. If you would give him the address and your name and contact, he is going to stand up here in just 30 seconds.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Chris DeRosa.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. My name's Chris DeRosa. I'm a property owner resident on Landing Lane neighborhood, which is on the east side of El Camino and one of the few flood zones in the city of Millbury. I have been in contact and working with Cyrus Keempore, who is the interim DPW Director since March of this year, before Keelim became DPW Director. Me and some of my neighbors who have attended today, a lot of them can't come because of the schedule conflicts, have been having monthly meetings since June and had a multi-jurisdictional meeting with San Francisco and the Caltrain in August to define property ownership and maintenance between the jurisdictions. And it was disclosed that some jurisdictions have not done anything in 20 years. I personally kept the minutes of all these meetings. The neighborhood stands between Millbury, Caltrain, San Francisco Airport properties, and in some of these meetings, Keelim himself was present. It was all agreed by all parties to have maps of ownership and maintenance schedules drawn up by mid-September for September meeting. But as, as of present, that has appeared to be pushed off by Mr. Keelim in an email, which I have attached so you guys can see, that says that you guys have high priority city issues that need their immediate attention, and he'll get back to me in a couple of weeks. The neighborhood last year experienced five floods last year, and two houses were damaged. The neighborhood, the neighborhood needs to be one of City of Millbury's high priority issues before winter this year, which is about to begin, where rain and floods will soon be happening again. I know none of you guys apparently live in our neighborhood, and the people living in this neighborhood are the eyes and ears of the city regarding the flood issues. On March 28th, 2017, there was a city council meeting in which Marcia Rains appeared to earmark $50,000 to $100,000 for a CRS, Community Rating System study through FREMA. Pacifica did it in 2011 for their flood-prone neighborhoods, and I believe Millbury can as well if someone starts working on it. It's a one-year process for an article written in the Pacifica Tribune dated June 12th of 2013. I wish to continue the monthly meetings with the DPW Director to follow up with the progress. And since we have made good progress on these issues with the other jurisdictions, and as now, as you can see in Mr. Lim's, in this email, the flood-prone neighborhood is not a high priority city issue. Cyrus, at the time, and a few of our neighbors had clear goals that we wanted to find out and wished to continue this with Mr. Lim. The goals were as follows: What level of maintenance is the city doing now? Midterm plan, what the city can do to alleviate the problem, and a long-term plan, what capital improvements can the city do to maintain the area, which included the FREMA, CRS, and possible grants. I've spoken to Mr. Lim personally via email regarding this issue in 2013. Now it's 2017. Four years later, and new, no community service rating system or flood mitigation has occurred. The city cannot let our opportunity to mitigate flooding or sea level rise pass us for, pass us again, or this could be, this can be disastrous as Houston or other low-lying cities if not dealt with immediately. As of only this morning, Mr. Lim has forwarded me his maps. I would like him to follow up with other jurisdictions via email to see if Millbury maps differ than the other agencies, so, so we know if there are any discrepancies, and to continue our monthly meetings to stay on top of this issue.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa. And I believe we have given direction to follow up and continue on these meetings. Okay. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar, items five and six. Do we have a motion?
Would like to pull off six.
Okay. We have a request to pull off item six from the consent calendar. Do we have a motion for item five? Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Lee and a second from Councilwoman Schneider. Your votes, please?
Consent calendar, item number five is unanimously approved.
Okay. And for item six, should we bring Mr. Lim back? Sorry, item, item five you wanted to...
It's Bay Shore.
Item six.
It should be item six.
Okay. Should we bring Mr. Lim back in the audience, in here?
The request for the public, it's to take some gas tax money and add Old Bay Shore to the street repair and to actually do that repair ahead of repairs on Larksborough and two other city streets. My concern is, first of all, why are we doing that part of the street before we do the other streets? But the bigger concern is, Old Bay Shore is part of the flood maps. It's also part of the sea level rise. It's actually one of the, the areas that were studied under the Sea Level Rise Vulnerability Assessment Program. And they know that it's one of the areas most at risk for getting people out of the hotels and out of the low-lying commercial, industrial area, out of there. So if we're going to do a road repair, I'm concerned that we're doing it ahead of the green infrastructure plan, which may or may not have a way of draining that area better at high tide or high, high water, high rain episodes, and that we haven't, we won't have time to incorporate it into the work that the sea level rise people are doing. And that was a specific area that was one of the 20 areas that we studied under, 20 or 30 areas we studied under vulnerability assessment. So I would prefer that we do the other streets first and do this one second. It gives us a little bit more time to catch up with the changes that are going to happen because of sea level rise.
So the project was brought forward at the request of some of the businesses down in that vicinity. There are some, some definite problems with the roadway that have persisted for a number of years and are now deteriorated to a point where we need to do something. The issues that you're identifying may or may not have been considered in the staff proposal bringing this forward. So it's the pleasure of the council. We can continue to work with our businesses and ask their patience as we have for quite some time. We can look at this and consider the comments that were made by Councilmember Schneider. Again, it's, I can step out and see if I can get the Public Works Director back in here. If you want to go on and, and start with council comments, and we'll come back to it.
Does the timing have to do with the funding of SB1?
Yes, yes.
Because the second half of the funding comes up later? I mean, that's what it sounded like in the staff report.
Correct.
If we could just try to reach out to the county and try to reach out to some of the designs that are being implemented in these low-lying areas, if we go ahead and we patch or we rebuild this road only to have to rebuild it in a few years as part of the sea level rise, I'm losing my vocabulary tonight, the...
Flood zone?
The resiliency work. The, it's a new term now that we're trying to harden our, our communities, get them ready for higher tide. It is right by the bay right there. But if we know that we can do that, or that we leave the flexibility, I don't know the extent. If we're just repaving, that's one thing, but if we're affecting the gutters, the drainage system, anything like that, this is the time to be looking at it.
We are. And it's my understanding that the dollars that flow through SB1 would require coordination, but to that extent, I'd need the Public Works Director to address this.
Councilman Lee?
Okay.
Yeah, can we bring him back in here?
Yeah, bring him back in first.
You want to go get him?
It's meeting time.
So to bring you up to speed, having been out of the room, they pulled item six having to do with Old Bay Shore. And I will let Councilmember Schneider express her own questions. There were questions.
If I can do it more, more succinctly. I have no problems with doing the road. The problem I have with timing, because we don't have our green infrastructure plan yet, and yet this is a road that's most definitely going to be affected, and this road is going to be affected by sea level rise, and it's also our low-lying area. So to me, I'm a little concerned that we're spending, yes, we're getting some gas money and, or we're using our gas money, and we're getting some SB1 money, but we might have to tear that road up and redo it again if the new sea level rise program dictates a different design of the road.
This is actually going to be a routine roadway maintenance. We do our pavement condition index inspection every three years. So when we get to a certain pavement condition index scoring point, we would do a simple resurfacing project. For example, the project could be a simple slurry seal, depends on design, or it could be a thin overlay. So it's really, doesn't really directly relate to sea level. It is more of a maintenance repair type of project. And I know the $650,000 sounds like a lot of money, but it's actually going to be used for two phases. The first phase is going to be design and constructions of Old Bay Shore Highway between Burlingame, Sillamet to Millbury Avenue. And the second phase would be a design of the next project in 2018, where we will be repaving Larksborough, Lomita, Bayview, and some other major streets in the north sides of town upon the completion of the wet weather program project. But that would be for design.
If it's a function of slurry sealing or laying oil, I have no problems at all.
It would be, like I say, a routine maintenance, either slurry seal or very thin overlay. Thin overlay usually, I means inch and a half. This is the least asphalt that you can effectively lay on the ground.
Okay, cool then. It's the cheaper of the options, then?
That is correct. We try to get this to it with a fairly good PCI score, anything between 50 and 70, and we can invest. For example, the cost comparison would be about $2 a square foot to do maintenance compared to $90 to $100 per square foot for a reconstruction of a roadway.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion from Councilman Lee and a second from Councilwoman Aliva. Your votes, please.
Consent calendar, item number six is unanimously approved.
Okay. Next on the agenda is council comments. Let's start with Councilwoman Aliva.
I was just going to comment on one thing that was going today, and that is that it's a National Registration Day. And being council members and intrigued with government, I would encourage everybody that's watching, watching to, do we have registration forms in the city hall at the front desk?
We have the voter registration forms at the community development counter, the finance counter. I have them in my office, and the library also has them as well.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
And it can be done online with the county.
Very good. Okay. Councilman Lee?
Yeah, and I think they're going to do all ballots, too, some places. And I got information from the election official. They said they're going to, probably in 2018, Millbury will have, we want essential voting places, probably the library or city hall, one of the other places.
To explain that further, Samhain County is going to be a test project once again for the state of California. So there will be a voting center, and we're hoping the Millbury Library will be that center. So I think they're proposing that the library voting station will be open for days, like 10 different days, so you could go in and vote. And everyone will be getting an absentee ballot, whether you requested one or not. So it's going to be interesting, and that will not happen until June, but we can all expect some sort of variance.
Not 2000, no, probably November 2018.
Okay.
And it's, and they'll have, and they'll have a self-addressed envelope, stamped envelope, so you don't have to pay. And the Associate Bear Government's Executive Board, the A-BAG, is this acronym, Charge of Planning and Providing Financial Services to Cities, Insurance, and that's where we do our, get our insurance from, who we're insured with. They have successfully merged their planning staff. So that's a big deal. And the executive director is Steve Hemminger. So he's, so he, but Brad Paul's still, he's still at the meetings, and he's the deputy, as far as I understand. And the, the executive board is going to go under, I'm on the executive board, just in case you're wondering. The executive board is going to be doing a reorganization soon. And so Julie Pierce will be vacating her seat. And it'll probably be Supervisor Rabbit from Marin. And the, let's see. So the, this is Clean Energy, and Janet Kreech is on advisory board, and she left before, I could tell her. But we, well, she was there. There was a retreat, and we approved a half-a-billion-dollar contract with a solar company, and were their sole buyers. But it's only, but, you know, that's some concern. But in the big picture, luckily, we have a lot of experts on our board who are very involved with energy, and they felt there was a prudent acquisition. And the, it'll encompass about 14% of our entire portfolio. So we don't expect it to be, we expect it to be a good project. It's a 25-year project, and it's going to be located, it's going, it's going to be located that, near the Orville, the Orville, not the Orville, San Luis Obispo dam. So it'd be, it's going to be a huge project. And they also talked about, with the proceeds, some of the proceeds in doing micro projects, financing micro projects, so our city might, you know, we have some energy-efficient projects or solar projects that we may be considering. We may want to, you know, have it ready so when, when the call-out for, for grants go out, that we can, we can apply for those. And it was a very, it's, so the board, so this, this organization's about one year old now, which is pretty amazing. And we still have an opt-out rate of under 2%, which is phenomenal. And we're still the largest, what's called CCA, Community Choice Aggregate Organization in the country, or in the state at least. There is some pushback happening at the, at the Sacramento. They're, they're doing things like doubling charge, or doubling a hundred, you know, doubling the charges for transfers, energy transmission... transmission fees and that sort of thing. So we're always on the lookout. And then also, one of the speakers spoke about SB 649, which is a bill that pretty much precludes cities, the voice on where cell phone equipment can go. So the city really has no input. The state would have all the input. And the dollar amount is some concern because obviously $250 is not going to really pay for any impact that's going to be, you know, any impact that occurs for the city. So, but we're more concerned about the fact that we don't have a say in where this equipment goes. It can go in a school, it can go in front of anybody's house, and they can put any equipment they want. And the city has no say except a rubber stamped permit. So it's on the governor's desk for approval. So if you don't want a refrigerator-sized cabinet in front of your house, I suggest you call the governor and ask him to veto it. And I think that's, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lee. Yeah, that was a big topic at the League of Cities Conference and something that cities across the state are very much opposed to. Councilman Schneider?
Okay. Two things came up at the Emergency Services Council. Number one, the hazardous mitigation update plans are going to start including lightning strikes and cooling center needs. That was the reason for my request about lightning strikes. Before that, when I had asked, they said, "We didn't get lightning strikes, and we didn't need cooling centers in Millbury because we don't get hot enough and we don't have lightning strikes." So they're now going to be reporting to us quarterly on the needs and the conditions and to set up a process. Generally, there wasn't a good process for opening up cooling centers over Labor Day weekend, so we did a discussion of that. So that's the good news. We'll start getting more reports, more updates, more actions that the representatives, the local government, the elected official representatives can bring back to their community and make sure that we're moving forward in protection. The City and Council Association of Governments Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, sorry, very wordy, BPAC, has received 29 grants for bicycle and pedestrian with an emphasis on safe routes to schools. We can only fund, I serve on that committee, we can only fund a third of them. This coming Thursday, all of the cities will be coming and giving a presentation for their grants. Millbury has several grants in there, and then we will be voting on those in October. So we'll know if we'll receive any grant funding in October. We already talked about the potential need for striping on Millbury Avenue, so that the constituents who have contacted me can know that the city is going to check on that. And thank you to Public Works for that. Cultural Arts is moving ahead on developing two processes for two types of public art. And then they will come back to the council with the processes, but begin to develop, how would you even begin to solicit it? They're talking to other communities about how they did it. Community enhancement, among their many projects, they have met with a group called Canopy. Canopy is a volunteer tree planting and tree maintenance program from Palo Alto. Now, we all know Palo Alto has great everything, but they're trying to learn how you can get more volunteer involvement in the care and maintenance or planting of new city trees for our urban forests. So they're moving ahead on the forestry issue, which was shared with them by Park and Rec Commission. Hopefully Gina will talk about teacher housing at Mills, which was a surprise to me at our meeting last week to learn that they don't pay property tax and they don't pay developer fees. It sounds like they don't pay anything, which is really frightening, and that was news to me. But I'll let Gina handle that. And lastly, Wayne and I, Councilman Lee and I, did interview quite a few candidates for various committees and commissions. I think we're going to be able to go forward on most everything except economic vitality. And I don't know, Wayne, if this is a good time to talk about it or we need to get some guidance from council on the candidates of economic vitality. It's a critical committee.
I think it needs to be agendized. We can discuss.
Okay. Could we get that on a future agenda to talk about the makeup of the Economic Vitality Committee? It's another one of our committees that has a difficulty making quorum. And so how could we find the right mix of people so that we can have quorum but still move forward with really critical work?
So do they have a quorum tomorrow morning?
They sent their agenda out. I'm not the liaison to that committee, so.
I am.
They did send the agenda out, so I'm hoping.
I can just quickly chime in on that. So if we did e-notify an agenda and not a cancellation notice, then there will be a meeting. So based on staff's input, we have heard that members will be attending, so we are hopeful that we will have a quorum.
Vice Mayor Papin?
Thank you. Councilmember Schneider was referring to, we had a joint meeting with the school district, which we have quarterly. And at that meeting, the representative from the high school district had mentioned that the housing suggestion at Mills High School is not in the works presently. Their priority is to relocate, was it Thornton?
Chris Moore.
No, Chris Moore's already closed. I believe it's, the continuation school. So that is not a priority here, but was pointed out by Councilmember Schneider and is of concern to us is the fact that we, as residents, would have to pick up the tab for public safety and all that. So I'm hoping that Councilmember Schneider and we can reach out to our elected representatives at the state legislature to hopefully fix that loophole so that the city is not burdened by any future developments in that area. I would like to thank the city staff and everyone who turned out to the coastal cleanup. It was spectacular. St. Dunstan's, I believe, one of the teachers, either at the middle school or Mills High School, was actually giving credit for those who showed up. And I think the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts and everyone, and it was just an all-around great event. Again, I'll point out, for those who tuned in later, the developments at and around the BART station will be going before the Planning Commission. The first one on October 2nd. It is an open hearing here in chambers and starts at 7:00. The other one is October 16th. We encourage the public to participate in those programs. They will also be televised. I do want to compliment the Daily Journal today. Austin Walsh had a wonderful article on the front page about the nightmare commute, or I think there's a radio thing that says soul-crushing commute, that many of us are going through these days, particularly with public transportation. And please note that the article emphasized Caltrain and BART talk, and they seem to talk right around each other, because that station has been there in Millbury since 2003. We still don't have joint ticket booths or signage or any of that stuff, and it's truly pathetic. 10,000 people bored at the Millbury BART station on a daily basis, and that needs to become a priority. I will emphasize, too, the MCTV Online here in Millbury has a program or a video they did regarding our sewer repairs. So please check it out. It's very educational. It lets you know the system. You can see firsthand how tragic the system is and what's being done by the city. I thank you very much, and that's all for me. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Schneider, you had a very quick.
Christopher Del Negro is our Commissioner Chair for Park and Recreation. He was invited to San Bruno's Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, and he invited me along. So Christopher gave a really fantastic presentation to their BPAC, including lots of maps of lots of portions of trails that we have in Millbury, many of which just don't quite connect. But I wanted to give a shout out. Christopher did a fantastic job. I've got a collection of those maps, and it's a place for our BPAC to be moving forward. In San Bruno, they have a separate BPAC. It's not part of Park and Rec like ours. And they report periodically to council, so it would be great.
BPAC being?
Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, sorry. Thank you. Maybe we could get, and Christopher is a gem because he's a former professional and college-level bicycle racer. So we've got a great person in there. But maybe BPAC could come to a future, our bicycle pedestrian could come to a future council meeting and show us the map, show us where the bits are and how we can connect them and how it connects with safe routes to schools.
Thank you for that. Okay. I attended the Commute.org board meeting last week, and we had an interesting presentation on bike sharing. Certainly an emerging industry. I'm sure you've seen LimeBikes showing up everywhere in South City and in San Bruno. A lot of different options, I think over 70 different companies that are in the bike-sharing industry. So it's something that I think certainly, you know, needs regional collaboration on. You know, if you can take out a bike in Millbury and you can't take it into Burlingame or San Bruno, it's quite limited in terms of the use. And, you know, many of people who use the Millbury train station commute into or from Burlingame or Hillsborough or other places. So I believe Commute.org is planning on putting on a bike-share symposium, and I think it's really a staff-level type of meeting. So if we could have a representative from our city staff attend that meeting once it's scheduled and kind of look at some of the different ideas and determine, is this something that is a priority for Millbury? Is it something that we can work with some of our neighbors on? But certainly something we should be looking into. I also attended the Library JPA Governing Board meeting. We had a presentation on Makerspaces and the Makerspace Master Plan, which we had approved. And they've been working on it for a number of, for some time. Usually when we think of Makerspaces, the first thing that comes to mind is a 3D printer. You know, you say there's going to be a Makerspace, that means there'll be a 3D printer there. But there's really a whole lot more that that entails, really hands-on learning. And it's something that, you know, we're looking to expand at all the libraries county-wide. And then we, last week, had a special meeting on the community center, which was well-attended. Well, not as well as the previous meeting, but we had a good turnout there. We also had an advisory board, advisory committee meeting on Thursday. And, you know, I think things are certainly coming together. We're starting to narrow down some of the options. So if you are interested, we are going to be having another workshop on October 24th. That is the same night as our regular council meeting. We will begin in the Chakuti Room at 7:00, along with the Parks and Recreation Commission. And then we'll be coming back in here for our regular council business at 8:30. But in the meantime, if you haven't had an opportunity to yet, please fill out the online survey and let us know what are the top priorities and what are the different options you would like to see for the new community center. And I think that concludes all that I have for tonight. Yes.
And I do believe it's on the website. There was a tour of other facilities.
Yes. No, go ahead. I wasn't there, but.
Yeah, I know. So part of the committee and city council members and residents went and looked at facilities throughout Menlo High School, a couple locations in San Jose, to get the idea of what size means as far as gymnasiums go and what facilities are working and how. And those locations are on our website. So we encourage the public to go look at the possibilities and what can be envisioning a future recreation center for Millbury, please. I mean, we saw some wonderful examples. Sorry.
Yes. And I'll give another shout-out for this Sunday, the Japanese Culture Festival, which will be in the library parking lot. So looking forward to see you there. So thank you, everyone who attended and watched at home, and we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled council meeting. Good night, everyone.